Thursday, so we can finalize the dates on that. They are hiring a new training coordinator over there, I think we discussed last time, Heather Harrell is moved up to Alumni Relations. Liz is interviewing, I believe tomorrow, some candidates and that person will participate with us in some of the training as well. So ultimately will be a good person to help support training, not only with the city, but also with other entities here in Alpine. Looking at the coffee with City Manager, second session, tentatively targeting October 30th. Need to validate that with Liz because session two, we're looking to have over at the Fields and Gardens. Once Liz and I map that out, we'll get that published and out to everybody. From a hiring perspective, I've gone through interviewing all of the applicants on building vision and we anticipate being able to make that recommendation on November 5th. Would have loved to have made it today, three weeks out is, I hate waiting, but certainly we will have that recommendation for council on 5th. And also, we're marrying in, we're replacing, so to have that queued up on November 5th means as well. The supporting staff, so we had some other openings in the city, we talked about that 180-day plan. Part of what we're working through with our department heads right now is looking at their entire staffing model it takes to run their departments. And as we're working through that, we had the discussion that our department head needs then we're handling the final staffing with the remaining city of Alpine. And we'll be looking not only at the staffing numbers, but the pay rates through that budget The Scott Perry, he's here again this evening. We didn't run him off, did we?
He's resilient.
Yeah, we're really super happy to have Scott. And he will be presenting to council, on his initial assessment. I know that was something we talked about the last council meeting was, was him getting the ground and really pulling together an assessment, so he will provide that on November 5th. Tonight, we're doing readouts from our gas department to tourism and waste department. That's something we talked about is how do we make sure we've got high level of communication back to council, department head is here, able to answer questions as well. So we will take those presentations, a couple of you saw your packets, and put those out on the website after tonight's meeting as well. One of the other things we had identified, 180-day plan, is looking at priorities and challenges per department. In the emails that I send out, the weeks that we don't have council, I will send you out a mapping of that this next week. So you'll be able to see by department, what are those two or three key priorities and key challenges that we're focused on. Look for that next Tuesday. TML conference, seven attendees from the city of Alpine. Really great information on roads, asphalt, pavement, we talked about that in workshop today. Water sewer infrastructure, Mayor and I open at a metering, a water metering booth as well. Great information on cybersecurity, IT management, something that's coming out in some of our budget surveys with council relative to how we're managing and administering to that as well. Another neat thing Darryl and I have been talking about is the street speed sign, you know, as you go through different communities, sometimes you'll see a speed limit of 30 and then you'll have kind of that little radar that flashes and shows you if you're over the speed limit. So looking at how do we implement some of that within the community. And then also, some of the smart buy, online auctions, things of that nature, we can certainly either utilize or implement here in the city. So I thought it was a great conference, tons of information, as with all of these, we get out of it what we put into it. It was fantastic. From a financial perspective, didn't run Megan off either, she's here this evening. One of the things Megan and I spent some time yesterday is starting out that, and I call it the budget amendment process, but it's looking at the budget that council has and how do we understand, do we need to make changes to that relative to staffing, relative to capital, relative to some of those line items? All the way down to revenues related to our utilities, so our water, wastewater, gas, do we anticipate higher or lower revenues as compared to last year? First step is really going back to department heads and looking at what their staffing models are and what their proposed capital improvement plans or five-year capital plans are. And so, those worksheets were handed out to each department this morning, then I'll be returning those to Megan later this week, first and next week. And let me kind of insert here, one of the things that I would like to do, and I didn't get it on this week's agenda, but I would like to contemplate doing a budget workshop, maybe four o'clock on November 5th. So similar, so what that's going to require is even the mayor sign off on that, or three council members sign off on that. So I think it would be good to be able to come together as a group, so.
Do we want to talk about that now, make sure Greg will do that? Do you want any feedback from us on the?
Yes, yes. Is November 5th going to be a group date for everybody?
Sure.
So Mayor's.
My.
One of the things also that we talked with our key staff today about was, I call it the needs versus wants spending. As we're working through kind of this refacing of our budget for 2020, we have things that have to be done. For example, our dryer that our animal shelters went out. You've got dry towels on, right? You've got plenty of pets. And so, that's something that we're approving immediately. But other things that are maybe anticipated or envisioned this year, we're really trying to hold back through the rest of this calendar year, once we get through the budget amendment process, then we'll certainly know what we've settled on for the remainder of the year. One of the other pieces from a financial perspective, and I sent this out early this afternoon to council, was a delinquent account. We've got a lot of utility accounts that are delinquent. Basically, accounts that have gone dormant, are delinquent, they've lost money. And we need to think about as a city, how do we constrain to that? Do we want to update our wardens to, from, you know, you've got a university in this town, we've got a lot of kids that come in and they rent a place, it's May, they're graduating, they zip out of town, they don't pay their last bill. So do you look at it from, the owner of that property is still obligated to pay that? I think we need to absolutely address this through wardens, which I consider. I wanted to give you some visibility to those delinquent accounts that are out there, but this is something that we'll come back to either in late November, early December, proposing wardens to adjust how we handle these types of accounts. So I want to make sure we're all kind of clear on what's transpiring, that I think we do need to take some action on this.
Yeah, I mean, I was amazed, water delinquencies, $35,000. And frankly, I'll admit, I was not surprised by one of the delinquencies because they went bankrupt and shut down. But I was surprised by a hotel, who's got a fire out there, who's got a bill of three grand. And I'm thinking, what's going on there? So clearly, we're missing out on $35,000 and not getting the point there. And are they responsible for that, I know? That one hotel?
Yeah.
So they need to lock it or pay the bill? Like that. Amazing.
So war will come on.
Yeah, good.
The, one of the other pieces that Megan and I are working on right now is really what our fund balances and what happens with all of them. So she will be providing a quarterly readout on our financial landscape, up to including our fund balances after November 5th. Moving right along, budget surveys, we have feedback from two folks so far. I would ask the rest of you, go back, look at that survey, it's simple eight, nine questions. Please tender that to me by first and next week, by Friday next week. That will help us in our process on November 5th, when we really prioritize and look at any amendments that. What I am seeing as a theme, obviously, two surveys that have come back is paving streets, parks, utility infrastructure, technology, how are we using our city-owned facilities in real estate, our staffing, our grants program. So these are themes that will continue to emerge in the, thank you for blowing this on November 5th. Landfill update, Rod and I really, you know, we're both out of TML, we didn't make a whole lot of headway on that in the past two weeks, other than I do have a meeting with Republic who bought dump disposal scheduled for Rod and I on November 7th. So we'll be here to count and address that with them. Rod and I will also, Rod's researching really about course of action relative to the engineer that had signed off on that cell utilization. And, yeah, I put this back on the agenda because to me, this is an important item from a city perspective. We need to keep heightened visibility on this, and this is an important asset for us. And there is more and more growth in the general vicinity and what's happening is, these places are looking for areas to offload their drash. And, you know, we're permitted for 20 tons a day of MSW and 20 tons of construction demolition. And we want to make sure we manage best to what we're permitted to. Percolation rate, we finally, Rod hammered, 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 finally sent us back this note today. Following up on the percolation rates, according to the geotechnical report, percolation rate of soil is eight minutes per inch. In the case of a hundred-year swarm upon headwater elevation depth would be 5.8 feet. With that headwater elevation, the percolation rate, they can assess that a hundred-year swarm will percolate in 3.92 days, meaning that water will go on through. That's worst-case scenario, but certainly sub four days is better than what we would see out of Holiday Inn Express where it's four years percolation rate. So they are requesting, I'll queue that up on November 5th, council meeting before council meeting. I don't see any issues with that.
No, I think the question that was on my mind and was, does that necessarily have a safety barrier around the pond or not, since it's going to be empty most of the time? So that was the only other question I had.
Yeah, 5.8 feet, which would be.
That's the policy of the.
Right.
You know, lots of problems. The riveries understand, because that's people ingress in that area, given it's going to be 49 units and the number of kids can be running down there, there's the issue, I got to.
Might be something that we request, is a barrier constructed and it's at least five.
Yeah, that's keep kids happy, get something on that.
I want to kind of touch on the key projects that Rod and I are focused on. Certainly that landfill issue, our country club, currently his water usage, long-term plans, he's pulled all the background information on what we've agreed to with the country club, what the lease looks like. Rod's and you and I will meet next week and then sit down with the country club to work on, and certainly development projects, not just the Chia, but just overall downtowns, so you can prove some of the development downtown Alpine. Just wanted to finish off, say it's a great time to be in Alpine. Tremendous activities, tremendous energy in the community, it's a great time to be here.
Good. Any questions?
Eric, I do want to tell you that Joe Torres has three big buildings out there that could put rain catchment on, okay? That would, that might defray some of the cost of the city water. He's got one long little building that's at least 10 by 20, you could catch 500 gallons of water in a moderate rainstorm, and how many moderate rainstorms we had the last two months?
Right.
Just FYI.
Yeah, I put in 18,000 gallons of water catchment and I'm full.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's go ahead and move on to city attorney report.
Mayor, council, public house, Cleveland, Detroit. I think Eric covered a lot of the territory under work on, keeping up with the municipal court, who are working on clearing up that opiate and having some success. We had court last week and we have it Monday. And I had to support every week to check and watch around the cases and see if we can dispose of them ahead of time, ahead of time. The one issue that I wanted to bring up, Mayor, was an issue, it's a personnel issue. There had been a previous HR director, Brooke Upchurch, resigned, and when she resigned, she sent a letter of resignation to the city manager, but she also sent it to all the members of the council. That letter, although she sent it to everybody, remained a city personnel matter. And city personnel matters, we have to keep confidential. We can't disclose them to the public, we can't disclose them to the parties. Mayor, we sent out a copy of that to Dave Lambrix, I would like that you received it. And I like Dave Lambrix, I've known him for a long time, but I would consider him to be the mouth of the South. If you send something to him, it's going to be distributed throughout Alpine in five minutes, that's Dave Lambrix. And so, I just need to sort of warn the council that don't may get stuff sent to you that probably shouldn't be sent to you. If you get something that seems like a personnel issue, you should refer it back to the city manager, or the city secretary, or the HR person. It's not unusual for city employees to maybe complain to the council. But under our city council manager form of government, the person responsible technically taking care of those is the city manager rather than the city council. So I don't want the council to be placed, the city to be placed in a position to get sued by somebody by saying, my confidential personnel matters were disseminated to the city. So I don't know, I laid part of the attention at the time, Mayor, but I would have to watch for those things. I'm sure that's about it. I guess there weren't any other matters. I think you covered the ones, the other ones can work at all.
Yeah, I think that was key items, you know, one of the things that we're really trying to do is keep the pedal on now, whatever the progress and keep council with the board there, keep the community involved as well.
Make sure there's good transparency in all the facts that you do.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. I agree with you on this one, but interesting enough, the way I also perceive this letter, it's a letter of resignation, but it also has, I guess, many levels of grievance, like this individual was grieving regarding her previous position.
And if it's grievance, it needs to go back into the city hopper and be dealt with as grievance confidentially according to the city procedures.
She wrote it as basically a resignation letter, but she brought up some very interesting points in there. And if I may, maybe just pick your legal guidance and expertise on this? Can I do that?
You can, but I would rather we do that not at a council meeting, because once again, those are personnel matters rather than public council matters. I could discuss them, but it's a, it's a personnel matter, like somebody files a grievance, they have a right to have handled confidential.
No, and I agree with.
She hasn't played for that.
And I agree totally with that, but I find it interesting that why this was brought up in an open meeting, it could have been brought up something to discuss in executive session, but it was brought up in open meeting, which means that it should be open for all the public to examine, review, and.
I brought up the procedure, I didn't bring up the facts, the facts are the rules to me, are personnel matters that can remain within the personnel policies of the city.
Then you can foresee that maybe at a future meeting, we can dwell in this, on this as a, what an executive session?
Yes.
And you and I will meet afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, any more? That's all. That's it? Okay, city staff update, city manager. We will have three presentations in our information discussion section. So before we go there, we're going to have public hearings. Verifiable, some.
You're on the secret.
Yeah.
According to the, we're going to go into public hearings next.
City staff updates, that's why I asked the question.
Okay, since under information.
Under information discussion, so we're not very attached.
Okay. City manager, you were.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have this. Information discussion.
Information discussion, yeah. Okay, public hearings then. And public hearings obtain citizen view and comments on ordinance 2019-10-01. In ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, establish a school zone adjacent to the Alpine High School along Highway 118 and State Highway 223. Establish the speed limit in the school zone at 15 miles per hour while beacons are flashing, authorizing traffic control signs to be installed, establishing a fine for the violation of this ordinance.
Wow. That's amazing. Yeah. I think we're okay, we get to that. You can present now or when we get to the second one?
We just can't ask any questions now.
Okay. Let's wait until the second.
Take the front chair.
Y'all still be up here.
Thank you.
Now we'll get to the consent agenda's minutes, but it's a report, the government reports and board appointments. Notice to the public, the following items are routine and administrative nature. The council has furnished the backgrounds or material on each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will newly be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items stop requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
We have two items on the consent agenda, minutes, and a resolution for our Brewster County appraisal district.
Council, what is your opinion?
So Mayor, I believe that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion been made in second, any discussion?
The, not so much a discussion on item B, and I have no reservation or approval, but just I guess from my own self-education and also the general audience, what is the purpose and of the city representative in Brewster County appraisal district?
Counselor, is this going to?
We have to pull that out.
Consent agenda.
Pull that, you have to pull it out. I'm happy to share, so probably you just got to pull it out of consent.
Okay.
So you're going to pull it out, pull it out?
Pull it out, we can do it on.
We've talked about it.
Nine, four.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, it's time.
So we're, I will amend the motion to approve the consent agenda for item A.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion been made in second, any discussion on this? All those in favor, raise your hand.
opposed by.
Thank you. So hold on, item B then. Item A, information or discussion agenda.
Our mayor and city council, we actually have Chris Rucia here to present to us on our visitor quarterly report.
I don't know why you changed.
Yes, I, and some, most of you know I'm Chris Rucia, Director of Tourism for the city. In the stead of Ellen Melvin, her husband is recovering from heart surgery right now. I understand that it went well, but it's quite a long recovery period, so she's still out of town here with him. And so she requested that I represent her, to test my ability. And so you have been given the visitor center activity numbers for the third quarter of 2019, July through September. Things I would point out, and I would welcome your questions, and if I can't answer them, I'll pass them on to Ellen and make sure answers get back to Eric. The activity that you're seeing is all the visitor center activity, but not all of these numbers happen in the visitor center. So if you'll notice, on July, the total, the total visitors was 1,979. And the average month in the visitor center is going to be 500 to 700 people walking through the door. The anomaly there is on July 25th and 26th, where you see 635 and 667 people. That is the remote visitor center booth that visit Big Ben box office. And so, the last two years, Ellen has set up there, we have surveys for her to hand out, and she, she notes how many people that, you know, she speaks to and gives information to. And both years, it's been from her reported outstanding attendance and response that she gets from the folks in the Viva box office. And then in August and September, you'll notice August 31st and then September 1st, we have 324 and then 217 people. That was a similar booth set up at the Lions Club Gun and Knife Show. So those 300 people, a busy day at the visitor center, you'll notice on July 1st is 61 people. So that increased numbers is folks who didn't come in, but she met elsewhere. The only other thing I would, that jumps out to me is the, we continually track that in-state visitors, they've always been a drive market since we have, of course, the folks who fly in to our airport are very valuable tourists, but the numbers are really in the automobiles. And so, and those are primarily in-state people. So you'll notice in-state visitors, 1,895 in July and 51 out-of-state visitors. We can decide at some point if we really wanted to try and address an out-of-state market, but my feeling is that for cost purposes, and I think there's a lot more Texans that we can invite to bring in, but that's what we're seeing right now. Does anybody have any questions at all?
I just made an observation.
Yes.
With one exception, the people, number of people visiting the visitor center is dramatically up. I mean, just across the board, looking at all months, you know, from 2018 to 2019, which is one of the things I had asked for, so it's just, it's ready to see.
Yes. Yeah, they're really busy these days. Yeah, I'm sure. Yes.
Just one very minor observation. And then.
And that is just probably a typo, but I noticed April 2019, that we had a total of 634 Tennesseans come to the visitor center.
Which month was that?
It was a big bus.
Yes.
Yeah, you know one from Texas.
Yeah, I haven't got those numbers.
The Texans forgot.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't actually get that, that exhibit, so.
Well, we had a Rocky Top.
Yeah. Is there anything else you want me to take back to Ellen, get any answers for, or request for next time? All right, thank you very much.
Next here, we have Mr. Randy Guzman from our gas department.
Hello, Randy is mine city, gas utility director city of Alpine. I've got a 2019 progress report. You go to the next page? Sure. City of Alpine Gas Department, 2019 progress report, where concentrating on the distribution integrity management plan, which is DIP, Distribution Facilities Replacement Program. We'll go over the 2019 leak survey and the 2019 TML audit. Alpine Distribution System Quick Overview. The city of Alpine provides natural gas to the citizens of Alpine and Fort Davis. The city of Alpine operates 68.2 miles of main, of which 58, I mean 55.89 miles are located in Alpine and 12.204 miles are in Fort Davis. The city of Alpine has implemented a distribution facilities replacement program in accordance with the Texas Administrative Code, Rule 8.209, Distribution Facilities Replacement Section F, Number 3. The city of Alpine will replace 3,432 feet of steel mains and services in Alpine and 792 feet in Fort Davis.
So Randy, you replaced the steel with poly. You told me this for, how long does the poly last?
Poly can last up to 200 years sometimes.
200? Wow, okay.
It's rated for 200 years. So, once this, once the facility becomes total poly, the only thing we'll ever have to worry about is somebody getting it.
So did you ever have any, and I know you're probably getting the leak detail when I was looking at it, did you ever get any leaks out of poly?
It is very rare. The only time that we've seen is at human error, fusion, the fusion didn't, didn't catch. So, we've kinda gotten away from doing a lot of the, what we call butt fusion, where you actually fuse the two pieces together.
Yep.
We've known, we've, we've found out that doing an actual electrofusion coupling that actually catches, you know, two inches on either side of the pipe and it fuses it all instead of a face-to-face, that, and it's done by a machine.
That's why you, yeah.
You hook up the cables to it and the machine tells it what to do. It, it's a little more pricey, but it's a more guarantee that we don't have any leaks out there when we're doing poly.
Thanks.
So, the 2019 Alpine DIP progress, steel gold, like I said, was 3,432 feet. Right now, we have pending 1,697. We've removed, replaced 1,122. Hopefully by the end of this week, we should have that 613 taken out also, so.
Wow.
That'll, that'll bring that pending down to 1,080.
And is your 2019 fiscal year or calendar year?
It's calendar year. We have till December to get it done.
So you guys are hustler, right?
Yes. The weather, the weather has really messed us up a little bit. The other, the other key issues that we had were the leak survey. We ended up having a lot of them this year, which is good. I mean, it's not something that we frown about. We wanna make sure that our distribution facility is up to par.
Yep.
The safer we make it, the better for everybody. So, the 2019 Fort Davis DIP progress, steel gold was 792 feet. You see there, we were actually removed 1,527 this year.
Wow.
And a lot of that was because we found a lot of leaks over there, and which helped us to go ahead and use that as taking out what was leaking and putting in poly.
So your extra 800 feet helped you on the Alpine goal?
No, you can't use it. I wish we could. You know, we, we're always asked that question to the rural commission and the feds, that if we go above and beyond, can we add that number to next year? So if something happened, they say, no. We used to, come January 1st, it starts at zero again.
That's good.
So, the next page, okay, 2019 leak survey. The city of Alpine conducted its annual leak survey in April of this year. Lone Star Corrosion performed the survey. This was the first year we decided to go with them. We kinda were starting to see that the last contractor that did it was getting a little lax, and weren't kinda listening to us telling them to slow down. There's a lot of bearables that if you go too fast, then you won't pick up what you're supposed to pick up. So, we decided to try Lone Star. This was their first year of actually getting out there and having the appropriate equipment to get this done. And it turned out that we were right. The last contractor was actually really failing us a little bit. I know, like I said, there, there's a lot of leaks that we found this year, but the way I look at it is, find them now, take care of them now. That way, as the years come back, the less and less we're gonna find. So the leak survey revealed a total of 124 leaks between Alpine and Fort Davis. Alpine had 39 below-ground leaks and 64 above-ground leaks. Grade 1 leaks, we found six for immediate repair. They're all been repaired. Grade 2 leaks, we found seven. You have up to six months for repair. Two are pending, so hopefully we'll have those two done by the end of this week, which means that we met our six-month goal. We're in three leaks, there's 90. We have up to three years to repair. There's 51 pending. We're not gonna wait to three years. Our, our goal is that if we find them, we fix them. So we just have three years to do it, but we'll, we'll get on them and get them out of the way. Like I said, those 51 that are pending will help us with our DIP goal to get our steel taken out. So in Fort Davis, we had 14 below-ground leaks and seven above-ground leaks. You'll see that there, on the grade 2 leaks, there was five, and we repaired all of those. Grade 3, there were 16. We actually had an extra bit of time that we had to keep our equipment up there, so we decided to just go ahead and jump on all those grade 3s and get them all and done with. So we went ahead and repaired all of those, so a little bit ahead of the game in Fort Davis, which is really our better system right now. I mean, it's a smaller system, but it's a better type system.
Randy?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's the difference between, you say underground leaks, if there's a grade 1, grade 2, grade 3?
A grade 1 is immediate danger to the community. Let me give you an example for a grade 1. If the riser, our riser, is right next to a house and it's leaking, it has the potential migration to go under the house, that's a known one. So if we find that, when we pin, when we pinpoint the leak, if it's going towards the house, we dig it up so that we can start aerating, so it doesn't follow that going under the house. But when we find those grade 1s, that's immediate. We call in 811, it's an immediate repair. We will not let those go, even if we, we can always downgrade the leak. We could, we could go and dig it up around that riser so that it can't migrate, and then downgrade it to a 2. But at that point, we're just gonna go ahead and get in there and get out, because you don't never know what you're gonna find. And once we dig that up, if there are any ratings under that house, it's better to dig it up that way. While we're doing that, whatever's under there can come back out. So that's why we, we grade those as 1s. Anything that, if there's a leak and someone decided to put a driveway over a gas line, they never called 811 to see what was there? If we find a leak on this side of a driveway and our meters on that other side of the driveway, we'll go ahead and take that out, because you can't have any structures over a high-pressure line. Now, you can have, you can build over a customer line, it's only four ounces, we don't advise it, but there's no rule against it. So it's just only high-pressure gas lines, you can't have any, any structures built over. And we have encountered some, some locations where people buy property and they don't check to see what's there. Oh, I'm gonna build another bedroom over here onto the side. But when we go out there, we're like, hey, we're gonna locate, no one calls, no one says anything. We'll go and we'll locate and say, hey, y'all just built over this gas line, well, then that causes an issue. Some of them have done it from years and years ago. We had one in Fort Davis where they had built a, like a little laundry room right over our, our service line. I mean, you knew that the meter was there, because they left a little cubby hole just for the meter to still stay there. And we were like, you know, wow. But since we're doing replacement and stuff like that, as long as it's not leaking and we're always checking in and everything's good to go. Unfortunately, we did find one this year at that location. Did have some issues with the customer. She did not like that we relocated the meter out to the property line. She just thought that it just made her house, but God awful. But we relocated that and rebuilt that line, we retired that line, ran it over here, around back to the, hooked up back to her house. Did an excellent job. I mean, everything was very professionally done. She did say she was gonna reach out to, because like I said, this was in Fort Davis, she was gonna reach out to the people there and the mayor or whatever, it's not, what is it? It's not a mayor's office. The county judge, right? Can't remember her name. I said, well, I even gave her my number. I said, go ahead and get, have her call me if, you know, you're gonna talk to her and I'll, I'll talk to her and tell her why we do what we do. Any new construction that we do, we try to keep the meters out on property line, provide the customer with a customer line at our expense, because the way I look at it is, our line is already in their property and it's leaking. I'd rather get that high-pressure line out of their property and provide them a customer line, so that they have four ounces instead of 35 pounds. And it just becomes their line and they're responsible of it. Like I said, if nobody ever messes with it, nobody ever touches it, that line will be there forever, so. We provide them tracing wire, we do everything like we would do our end. So, like I said, it's pretty turnkey.
I had a question, Randy. You're going with poly instead of steel for longevity? Now, in this area, we, it's volcanic. So is the poly being laid down in a bed of sand, or how does it stand up against?
We, if we find a lot of rock, we take it out and we have the Streets Department come and bring us fresh dirt to cover it up. Yeah, we won't just throw everything back in there. I mean, that, that would be senseless, because if we start throwing rock on top of that, well, you know it's less, you know, durable as a steel line. But even the steel line, you don't wanna do that, because even though it has the tape, once you, you break that tape on that steel line, that's why whenever, you know, people are excavating around our steel lines, if they nick it or they find it, we have them call us. We'll inspect where they found our gas line. If we find any nicks, even though it didn't penetrate all the way through to the steel, we'll go ahead and mastic, it's a black tar. We'll put mastic around it and then re-tape it again. And if they do nick it, well, we still mastic and then we, because if they don't let us know and they, excuse me, they nick it and they cover it up, well, moisture's gonna eventually get there. And what's gonna end up happening is, even though we have cathodic protection, this electricity, where that scar is, it's gonna rust out faster. So then that, that's a potential deep. So that's why there's a new rule that when we do our okay tickets, anybody calls in, there's, there's a little clause there, and I can't remember, it's a 192. When they locate our gas lines, regardless if they hit it or not, they are to give us a call. And we tell them that, when we call them and say, okay, we fixed and go locate, or we located, if you find this gas line, you need to please call us. And then we document it. That's how we keep up with escalators that are out there doing this stuff. So, yeah, no, but we do, we, we make sure that the spoils, if they're not any good, we get rid of them and we come in with fresh dirt. Of course, it's not fresh dirt all the way to the top.
Right.
But we'll, we'll go like halfway and then the rest will be collegiate. Keep it more secure. Okay, so the 2019 leak survey, leaks Alpine were 51% complete. Above ground, unrepaired, there's 24. Below ground, repaired are 12. Below ground, unrepaired are 27. And then, of course, above ground are repaired are 41. So we're, we're halfway there. I know that we've actually done some more above ground, so this number's probably a little off. We're probably now like around the 60, 65%. But we're, we're moving along. The above grounds are pretty easy to do, it's just making sure that when we do that, that we either A, contact the customer to let them know that we're gonna do that, so we can put them back in service, or we leave them a note. Of course, when we leave them a note, that means we're gonna go after hours, so the person on call has to go and light that person, since we were the one that put them out of service for an emergency. So, but we try to call and contact them, try, you know, that when everybody's on the same page. 2019 leak survey leaks, Fort Davis, we're 100% complete, like I said earlier, so all of those are done. And we had seven above ground and 14 below ground. So to the 2019 TML audit, 2019 performance ratings, this is their rating systems that they go through after they go through the audit. You can see that we performed a rating of 98. So what they do is they look at our documents and records, is a 15 of 15%. Pipeline safety compliance, which 20 of 20%. Unaccounted for gas is 19 of 20%. Safety and training, 15 of 15%. Qualification of personnel, 15 of 15%. Gas system condition integrity is 14 of 15%. So, I think in the last, for sure, the last three years, we've scored a 98 or a 99. I think it was back in 20, was it 2014?
Okay.
That we scored?
2015?
2015, where we scored the actual 100%. Sammy Russo, the one that comes and does the audit, he speaks real highly of everything that we've done and kept up with. He says I'm, he says, I'll give you that 100 and don't ever expect it again unless you just show me that you're on top of more, more and above and beyond. But, I mean, keeping us at 90, 98, 99, 97, 95, you know, he, he says there's a lot of systems out there, especially distribution municipalities that are struggling and having a hard time. He was real, he was real thankful to hear that he had gotten some calls from some of the rural commission auditors, that they actually use the city of Alpine as a model on what other municipalities need to look like and how we've gone through. They kinda use us as an example on what to do and what not to do. So that's, that's a big honor over there in itself.
What's it been triggered to you and to your crew to do a well, a good job?
Yes, sir. And I'll, and I'll tell them that. Yeah, we, we do, we do have a good team over there. We all work hard and keeping up with what we need to do. There's a lot of manuals that we have to keep up with that they come and audit, and those are living documents. So anytime there's a, there's a change in any policy or any rules or regulations, we've gotta keep up with them, we gotta constantly change them. So, like I said, they're living documents and we've gotta stay on top of them.
Randy, what is unaccounted for gas, just lose it all on the way?
It's really lost and unaccounted. What, what happens there is, when we go and say we're gonna retire a section of 1,000 feet, two inch. Once we squeeze that off to where we're gonna retire, we go to the end of that line, say there's a riser.
Yep.
We'll bleed it out and time it.
Bleed it out, okay.
That's lost and accounted. Okay, we're, we're, we're timing it, we have a formula on what we can do now. Lost and unaccounted is, somebody hit a line and we don't know how much gas.
Gotcha.
We can only estimate.
Gotcha, okay.
So what we do then is that we'll use that same formula and say we got a call at 3:00. Oh, we get there and they're like, oh, we've been smelling gas for two hours. Well, we can only account the moment we get there to the time we stop it.
Yep.
So everything else is unaccounted.
Gotcha, thank you. Gotcha, thank you.
Randy, I have a real technical question. How are we doing compared to Marford?
Their risk model was when we were Southwest Texas Municipal Gas, when we were all tied in together, their footages over there were almost gonna be three-quarters of a mile per year. Just Marford. So if you would've used that three-quarter of, what is it, what's three-quarters of a mile? About 4,500?
Yeah, about 4,300, 4,500.
Okay. Plus what we have here and plus what we had in Fort Davis, then you're looking at over a mile that we would've had to replace in all three, in all three systems. So they got the bigger blunt of more infrastructure change. The percentage rates, they, the problem that they had over there was that their system was actually used at one time for propane. So that really could've hurt on their steel. The other issue that they had over there is that in the 80s, they were doing the right thing and doing the replacement. They were putting poly pipe, but they weren't putting tape or tracing wire. So now they have a lot of poly pipe over there. They know that it's there, they just can't roll it out. So that, even though a lot of it may be poly, they're gonna have to replace it or at least dig it up and lay some kind of tracing wire or something to be able to locate it. I will say that they use a contractor quite often over there to help them out. So they are spending quite a bit of money to get it done. So we're fortunate, like I said, on our risk model for DEMP, if we would've had 3% of a risk model, we would've had to replace probably a good four to eight miles of steel per year. We would've never been able to afford that. There's just no way. But our risk model falls under 3% and it's even way better than that because it's not even a quarter of a percent. I think Alpine is .014 and I think Fort Davis is .02 or something like that. That's why the footages are so low that we have to replace, which is good because not only do you have underground infrastructure, you have to maintain the above ground too. So it's, you've gotta do both. And right now, also on that note, I mean, it doesn't show on here, but we are doing a meter replacement program. We are trying to get rid of all the older meters that, we've got some that have been hanging there since 1964. So there's a few meters out there that are probably not registering. I can give you an example. Superior meter that's been there since 1964 may register 1.5 MCFs in a month. We replace that within the beginning of a new month, that meter, that new meter will register actually 3.5 to 4. So that's how much gas we're losing out there with these old meters. So the ultimate goal is the, if y'all ever see the meter out there, you'll see a stamp like, say, 19-100. That means that meter we got in 2019 and it's meter number 100. So when we see that 19 or we see a 12, if we see something that has a 10 and we're 2019, that means that meter's been there hanging for nine years. We try to change them every five to 10 years. As long as we find something that's almost close to the 10, we go ahead and change it. Even though it's a doll, and that's why we've gotten in real good with rebuilding our meters. It's, KGM comes out of Oklahoma. They don't charge us to come over here to pick them up. They don't charge us to bring them over here to deliver them after they're rebuilt. So we've got a good contact with them and they take care of us. They're real good at helping us out with whatever we need. So back to this, 2019 TML audit recommendations. This is just recommendations that they would like to see us do in the future. Of course, to continue to review covered tasks and abnormal operating procedures in the operations and maintenance manual and updates as necessary. That's gonna be till, hopefully I pass the torch to whoever else is gonna run the gas department one day because that's never gonna change. We always have to do that. Qualify and re-qualify personnel necessary on covered task procedures in response to abnormal operating conditions and document the meetings. We do that monthly. Anytime we make any changes to our own MOQ, we have meetings over it to let the employees know. So we cover that. Like I said, we try to have a monthly review and monthly safety meetings each month. Review drug and alcohol testing procedures to ensure compliance. We just had an audit and we did have a recommendation to add some stuff in it. We did it. So everything should be good to go. All our manuals, we try to review yearly, not exceed 15 months. So anything that comes up after an audit, we make sure that anything between then and the next audit, we have it in the book before they come and do it again. Review the damage prevention and public awareness programs as necessary. We just had those audits too. Anything that has to do with your drug and alcohol, your PAP damage prevention, DEMP, those are specialty audits. Those have been designed to be looked at. We were told every four to five years. We've been getting them every year. And I think FEMSA has come down hard on the rural commission, asking them that they make sure that they document these audits because in the past, we would have a yearly audit, what they would call a comprehensive audit. They would just, do you have this manual? They thumb through it and, okay, they have it. Well, did you review it? Is that what they're asking the rural commission? Well, we just... Well, no, you need to make sure that they're actually working and they're not out to date. There's been some people that say, oh, yeah, we have it. And the date is 1980 was the last time they actually did any revisions. They wanna make sure that they see the revisions and everything is going good on it. So then the next one is review the expanded requirements for excess flow valves. Y'all know what an excess flow valve is.
Yeah, but can you translate the expanded requirements in English?
Well, the expanded requirement is that we have a letter that goes out yearly now that allows the customer or the business owners to request to have one put in. I know that most restaurants that use high volume, most motels that use high volume, we don't install it. But now with this new rule, if they request it, then we have to purchase. Most high-volume restaurants and hotels, we provide them with a two-inch service. Every residential is a one-inch, so every residential automatically gets an excess flow valve. So if they ever request one, we go and we dig it up and we actually buy the two-inch excess flow valve and install it for them. If there's steel line, well, then of course, there we go, we use that as DEMP. Of course, we're still gonna charge them as a tap fee to get this excess flow valve put in so that they kinda offset what we're having to do for that. So there is a letter that we mail out each year and I believe it's in the statements. I'm sure y'all, if you have gas, you've seen it. So that's the expanded requirement. We, before, you didn't have to advertise that at all.
So who pays for it?
When they request it, there's a fee. They have to pay for it. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But like I said, when we do, like say there's a new motel coming in, we're gonna ask them, do you want one? Before we actually go and run it with a tap. If they say, ah, well, you know, here's the new rule, you know, it's for your protection. If you want it, it's there, then we'll provide it at that point with a tap. But if they tell us no, then we don't. It's just if they want it. It's not required by us to do it for, like I said, for anybody that needs high volume. But it is there now as an option if somebody can't sleep at night because they don't have it. And what an excess flow valve does is it's underground, it's right next to your riser. So if somebody runs over that meter, that excess flow valve, when you have that sudden burst of gas release, it shuts itself off. So that way, that gives us time to go over there, dig it up, and it won't open back up until we actually plug it or install a new riser. And what happens is what you'll do is you'll let it pressure back up and then you'll release, you'll open the valve, the top valve, your cutoff valve next to the meter. And what that does is that allows that to open back up. And then as soon as you hear it pressuring up, you turn it off and that, it reactivates that excess flow. So it's a very nice safety feature. I know that a lot of times the people don't like us to put those meters out on the property lines because they're afraid they'll get run over. But every meter, residential meter, will have that excess flow valve just for that. And that's another thing. Sometimes they ask for meter guards depending on the traffic and where they're at and everything. I don't like to install them. I think they're ugly. But if they get hit one or two times, even though they have an excess flow valve, then that's something we can think about. If the customer just requests it, then I think there should be a fee attached to that and we'll discuss those on a scheduled basis.
That's what I was gonna ask, if the customer requested, do you charge them?
Yes. I think it was, I think back in the past, I think we were only charging a hundred dollars. And, but we build it, we fabricate it and everything. It's actually steel pipe. So wherever, and we paint it, we'll paint it a real ugly fluorescent yellow so people can see it. Like I said, they don't look nice, but if you request it and you're willing to pay, by all means, we'll put it on. Okay, so continuing on, review the distribution integrity management plan, DEMP, annually and update as necessary. DEMP records must be kept for 10 years. I know that, that sounds like a long time, but we've actually been told that while the system is live, you should maintain all records regardless on what they are for the life of your system. But I guess they plugged in that number so that they see, you can gather a lot of material in 10 years. And I don't think that we would actually just throw it away. We would, everything that we do now anyways is scanned, is put on the computer. So, you know, it's a lot easier to look it up on the computer and say, here's this scan for this date, than go and dig it up through the boxes. So like I said, we're scanning everything anyways. It is also recommended the operator consider purchasing a remote methane leak detector to reduce the cost of repeated leak surveys and emergency responses. That has been asked of us probably for the last, I'm gonna say maybe four or five years now. That equipment is not cheap. That equipment runs anywhere from 18,000 to 25,000 dollars. What that would do is that would let us be able to do our own leak survey. I think that would be a good idea because we pay, I think, 11,000 a year for our leak survey. It would eventually pay for itself after three years. But by doing that, if we were to ever do that one day, it's just a recommendation. But if we were to ever do that, I would like to do that three years and then have an outside source come and do it for us. That way it doesn't throw red flags to our auditors and how do we know that you're actually doing this? So if we do it for three years and then have someone do it one year, like I said, eventually all of this would pay for itself. The system should also be inspected to ensure adequate protection from atmospheric corrosion. So that's a lot of the above ground. We need to make sure that our meters are painted. Just because you see a little rust on the meter doesn't mean that it's actually corroded. What they try to look at is if you see a rusty pipe and you see pits, then we're not doing our job. Anything that we see out there that's rusty, you can go wire brush it and then just put a fresh paint coat on it, a coat of paint on it, and you're good to go. If we find anything out there, which we should be doing that every three years, checking our above-ground facilities to make sure that there's nothing pitted. If we do find anything, then what we just need to do is what's called general maintenance. Tear down that meter set and just put it all brand new and then paint it all up again. So we do try to keep up with that every three years. We even kinda got a little head in the game on each work order. We actually specify on that work order to say, did you paint meter? So if you tell me no, I'm gonna see that picture. If I see that the picture shows that it's rusty, well, then why didn't you paint? So that just kinda keeps us to make sure that every time we go to a location, we're making sure that that meter is up to par. And that's all of the presentation. Do y'all have any questions?
Like you explained, 33.
So I have a question and then a comment. The question is, we said about this month, we start looking at where we are from a competitive standpoint to look at the pipeline as a second source to Southwest Texas Gas. I'm not looking for answer and I just wanted to remind us, we say in October, it's our work and it's where, uh, we're gonna work. So we'll come up to the contact exploration stage here, go over our homework. So that's a question. And then the other one, a comment, you guys can agree with it.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Great job. But we see why our gas is so awful.
Yeah, well, not only that, more revenue than we planned for and undercost.
Yeah. That's off the record. Awesome. Well, we'll keep the presentation up and Darrell?
Open it, folks.
I think we just opened it just to get a little bit of airflow in here. I know that... Hello?
No.
I'm surprised you got a deer in there.
It's in front of his house.
So hello, council. Appreciate y'all having me here. People asked me a long time ago, where did we come up with the logo for the police cars? And this is outside my front yard. I call him Pumpkin because he eats my jack ladders. So I got a better picture of him up close, but this is where I came up with the idea. And so I wanted to show that to y'all, how we started off. So early July, Chief Scann approached me and myself and Believe a Bureau, and told us that he was retired. And so ironically, we're doing our quarterly report today. So it started pretty much right after that. Chief Scann wasn't very much for taking time off or, so from July, after he told me this, he took a lot of time off. So I really appreciate his service. He served us for 23 years. He was a good role model for me and I was already there when he started. I started with PD in '94 and he started in '96. Very good role model and I appreciate everything that he taught us. One of the things that he always used to tell us, if we asked him for something, he said, we'll have a look. And so we put that on his cake. As far as us missing you, we'll have a look. So we had to add that on there. All right, keep going. So promotions for this quarter, we have Officer Derek Stratton. He's promoted to Texas Certified Intermediate Peace Officer. Texas has different levels. Once you graduate from the academy, you're a basic peace officer. And then you move up through a lot of training, you move up to intermediate. And along with that, you have your time of service. So Derek has really put forth initiative to reach his goal of intermediate. I told him, once you have your intermediate, it's pretty much downhill from there. It gets easier, just more time of service. So she is not only, she is my second-in-time dispatcher. We have another girl that's been there a little bit longer than she has, but Alexis is career law enforcement. She wants to continue working in law enforcement, and she thought this was a great step forward in that direction. And so I'm really happy to have Alexis. She handles my reports, she handles pretty much anything I need. I have Alexis helping me with it. As of September 1st, telecommunications are now classified as first responders, which requires them to have more training. The Texas Commission on Law Enforcement has put forth the training, and we're providing for them. I have actually communicated with our Region 8 Academy, which is out of El Paso, getting them to come down to Alpine to put forth some more training for our dispatchers. And we have a long schedule of training that I have for this year for our dispatchers, dispatchers especially. So we had a lot of events this summer. We had our Independence Day weekend, definitely keep us busy, Viva Big Ben, community-wide. We also had the Alpine to El Paso, the Richie Saloon, and we had Fiesta. So all these events, we provide security, we provide traffic control, barricades, setting all that up, making sure everything's done, making them as safe as possible. One of the things that we try to do as a police department is, especially for fundraising, which was the Alpine to El Paso event there at the Richie, we provided them with the barricades and the cones to make sure that the parking was appropriate for the business. We also provided them free security, basically. What I do is just schedule an officer to work at the Richie, make sure that they were there to provide some type of security, provide a traffic control for the event. We also put our message board out to make sure that they were aware that there was pedestrians walking back and forth, just to make sure that everything is safe. And that's our main goal. Okay, sir. So one of the things that we have always pushed for is at Alpine Police Department is community-oriented policing. It's our goal and it always will be, and I think that should be for any agency. We have programs and events throughout the year to interact with our citizens and visitors. This is a way to partner with the community in the fight against crime. If we can do these things, if we can get our community to help us, we've always pushed the see something, say something. We always, there's studies done on it that people, if there's a large, if there's an accident, everybody assumes that somebody else will call 911 or call for help. And so we believe that talking to our community and having us be a part of them, they can feel safe around us, so it pushes that issue. So we started with a bicycle rodeo with Texas Department of Health Services, teaching the kids rules and instructions, as me and Miss Controller talked, speaking earlier. We, it was a good first event for this. We did this over at the Coconut Park parking lot, and so teaching the kids proper signals, stopping at stop signs.
Yes.
And just being safe cyclists. And we did an event a long time ago with Texas Department of Health, and so I was aware that they have the free helmets. And so we got them coordinated this time, and they provided helmets again. And not only did we teach the kids the rules and rules of the road, but we also did safety checks on their bicycle, hold up the bicycles. We brought an air tank to fill up their tires, make sure that they were properly inflated. And so it was a good event, a good first event, and I was real happy to have the crowd that we did. And it got hot, so I was, so I was real happy to, it wasn't as many kids. Provided water and some snacks for the allies. So also in July, we did our active shooter training. One of the things that we try to do is try to coordinate with the school as many events as possible. And active shooter training as being the first school in Texas to have an actual active shooter, we have always, we've always pushed the training, but it comes to real when it actually happens to you. So we have this training annually. This was actually with Alert, and they provided the training for us. And we partnered with the Sheriff's Office, University Department of Public Safety, and a couple other state agencies. So along with the Alert training, active shooter response training, we also do other things at the school, and I just want to make sure that y'all are aware of it. We do our routine walkthroughs of all Alpine campuses of the public schools. I'm in charge of the sex offender registration, and so I provide the schools with an advisory list. So if you've ever been to the school to visit or check in, whatever, visit with kids, you have to run your driver's license. So if your driver's license is run, sometimes you might have a name that's pretty close to a sex offender, and so you'll hit the list. And so I always provide them with this list so that they know who they actually are here in Alpine. And so we have one guy that just worked for the Coca-Cola, and his name was very close to a sex offender. And every time he went in there and the staff didn't know who he was, there he was calling me up and saying, "Hey, can you please talk to the school, let them know I'm not a sex offender?" And so poor guy, he had that a lot. All right, following the school buses within the city limits before and after school. It's the routine we have. We start at 6:45 in the morning, and then we, for the morning pickups, and then we're doing the after-school pickup or after-school drop-off until about 4:30. There's the school bus six, he has a good route, and sometimes I feel sorry for him. We maintain patrol around the bonfire during homecoming week and around the games. One of the things that we always, probably about 20 years ago, somebody decided to light the bonfire early. And so I always tell my guys that are on a night shift, shame on you if the bonfires lit before time because it's not a good label to have. So again, for homecoming parade, traffic control, just trying to make everything safe as possible. Maintain patrol around Bus Stadium during football games. We really don't like, I really don't like the guys going into the actual game itself. I'd like them to be around the perimeter, checking on cars, make sure no one's going into cars, making sure that there's patrol around the area. There's so many pedestrians, don't want anybody hit. And so they do go into the actual field itself, but for the most part, they're going to be out there patrolling. And then closing off, once the game exits or ends, the vehicles exiting, provide traffic control. So one of the things we did, after the school shooting, we partnered with the Sheriff's Office, but we pretty much maintained the day-to-day of being a school resource officer with the school. And working with the Sheriff's Office, understanding what happened to Deputy Castillo's, Deputy Carrillo's daughter having leukemia, so we provided assistance with the high school, being school resource officers for them when they don't have someone to guard them. And so we have our officers constantly in the schools, making sure that they're maintaining a good working relationship with the school district. And like you can see here, this is a morning drop-off over at the high school. It's dark, and so this, providing the, this is bus six as well, providing the security for the bus driver, making sure that they, these kids are seen. Sometimes what we'll do is we'll, we try to be a deterrent. We don't want people to pass the school bus. So we'll put our car out there so they can see our car, make sure that they see there's a patrol with that bus. So go ahead. So we had, recently we had our National Night Out, and I appreciate y'all that showed up to it. This is one of our beautiful pictures, and they wanted a picture with all the first responders. So this was a good meeting with all the children. It's an annual event, love being a part of the community and having them out there. One of the fathers, it says, he goes, "Man, every year I forget about National Night Out", and he goes, "I see it on Facebook when y'all put it out there, but I always forget." But his kids have soccer and football, and he goes, "But here you all are, always out here", and then he goes, "It always helps me out." So that was Mr. Breto, he has seven boys. Yes. So he's the one that decided that he wanted the picture, and then all the rest of the kids jumped in. It's pretty awesome. Ice cream with a cop for the first time, this was a neat event. Thank you to Irma Campbell. Campbell, thank you very much. Irma Campbell, she approached me on it, and I thought it was a great idea. We had kids from all over the area. We were fortunate also to have a cross-country meet here, and so they were also, so we had a bunch of kids from Hector County, from all the area actually, and they were always wanting to take pictures with us and looking at our cars and seeing what stuff that we do as officers. Also, we have some fall events already going on. We have the Alpine High School Homecoming Parade, Bonfire, as I mentioned earlier. We provide the traffic control for the middle school and the high school football games. We have the Soraal State University College Rodeo Weekend, which has kept us very busy. And then we have our Soraal State Football Games here as well. We had our Lady Peace Catholic Church had their church bazaar. That was a good event. Again, we don't like to charge, especially when it's a fundraiser, and so I schedule the officers to attend these type of events. They worked from Saturday night for the dance, and then Sunday during the actual event itself, we had three officers work that morning, started that morning and into the evening. So it was a good event, and again, we don't, especially for fundraising, you don't want to put a cost into it. So October 14th is the three-year anniversary of Zuzu's being reported missing, and so I wanted y'all to see that. But with it, go to the next slide, we also convicted the conspirator, Christopher Estrada, for tampering without physical evidence. He was convicted on July 12th, and he was sentenced. And so it was good to put a nice closure to that case. Meeting with the family and talking to them, actually I visited with them the last time I was in Arlington, and Lori and Glenn are coping pretty well. So here's some convictions that we had this last month. We didn't have any convictions this month. Alvin Molinar pled out to four years, he's gone to TDC. Richard Garcia pled out to four years, TDC, he's probated, so he's got probation on that. Charles Whittington pled to lesser included offense, criminal trespass from burglary. Jessica Peere, two years probation, deferred adjudication for theft. And Clinton Gant pled assault, bodily injury, family member with affirmative findings of family violence, one year in Bush County Jail. Along with Mr. Gant, he's going to, he's seeking, we, to go into the federal system. He had some weapons that he shouldn't have, so he's also seeking some federal time. So we had our warrant roundup, it was very successful. It was quite fun too, because it's, when we put this out there, we left it kind of blank, and so we, just to see the turnout on it. And so we had all types of people call and wondering if they had warrants, and our answer to them was, "You need to call the court clerk and check with her to see if you did." And so there was one day, I went to go pay a visit, Loretta's gone now, but she was here earlier. Went to pay a visit with Loretta, and I said, "How's it turning out?" And she goes, "I'm not going to tell you, I'm going to show you." So she opens up her money box, and we had all types of people coming in paying their fine because they didn't want to go to jail. And so it was a very good response to it, and we did end up making some arrests out of it, but for the most part, everybody took care of their warrants, and that's what we wanted. We didn't want to put anybody in jail, we wanted them to take care of their fines. Speaking on the municipal court, great working relationship with the municipal court clerk and magistrate, just the relationship, you know, one of the things we talk about is just having a good working relationship with each other, and we have that with Loretta and Sandy Stewart. The municipal judge has responded to, and she lives in Fort Davis, she responds very well to our officers calling her in the middle of the night, asking for arrest or search warrants, and it's basically done over the phone on FaceTime, or she shows up at the office and ready to go. So Judge Stewart is awesome to have, again, great to have in here. Again, we completed our first warrant roundup with much success, and hopefully we can do it again.